Board, we now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnold Woods, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Co- Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Florida, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson, eighteen present.
Quorum being present, unless everyone in the chambers and the galleries is able to stand, then please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Introduction of our guests, any introduction of our guests. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce this morning joining us from the Carpenter's District Council, business agents and friends, Matt Murphy, Jeff Hans, Keke Taylor, Kevin and Scott Byrne, Dan Nieswander, Brian Dorr, and is Joanne here? Joanne Williams should be here, but I just want to introduce them as my special guests this morning. And also Kevin and Scott Burns, we all three grew up together, so you see who reign majely with the money. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us today, guys. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to have as my special guest, honored guest today, Gary Otten from the Painters, Celeste from the Realtors, Al from Local Seventy-three, and Percy from Fire.
Alderman from the sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today Gina Hackenworth, who is with LaCleed, Anthony Lancia with the AGC, David Holmes, who is the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and we have former Senator Tim Green, who's in the leisure room, who has, who represented the city of St. Louis quite well. Thank you.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, is Alderman from the tenth around to wrap us up? No, he's not. Approval of the minutes, Alderman from thirteen, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for approval of the minutes from the November eighth meeting.
Moved by Alderman from thirteenth, second by Alderman from twelfth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries, reported city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We'll dispense with line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill two four nine, sponsored by Alderman Vicaro, in earnest establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Maurice Avenue and Leola Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two fifty, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in earnest pertaining to parking within the North Newstead Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restriction for curb parking of residential parking zones within the North Newstead Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the placement of residential permit parking only signs within the district containing definitions of penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two five one, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in earnest directing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Whittier Street at the northeast corner of McPherson Avenue and Whittier Street to the southwest corner of McPherson Avenue and Whittier Street and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two five two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in earnest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-three sixty-seven Gibson Avenue redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two five three, sponsored by Alderman Young, in earnest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for three-oh-one North Memorial Drive redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two five four, sponsored by Alderman Young, in earnest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-two forty-nine Indiana and twenty-two forty-five Shenandoah redevelopment areas and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two five five, sponsored by Alderman Young, in earnest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-four seventeen South Ninth Street redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill two five six, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, in earnest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for sixty-three oh-one Manchester redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill two five seven, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, in earnest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-three twenty-nine through thirty-one Hampton Avenue redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two five eight, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in earnest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment area, redevelopment plan for forty-two oh-six Shaw redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill two five nine, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in earnest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-six twenty-two through twenty-six Kings Highway redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill two sixty, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in earnest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-fifty-one through fifty-five Maury Avenue and forty-five sixty-one through sixty-five Flat Avenue redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two six one, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia and Alderman Young, in earnest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Dolman Street Scattered Sites redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill two six two, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in earnest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-three oh-six Illinois Avenue redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two six three, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, in earnest moving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for twenty-one thirty-seven Nebraska redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill two six four, sponsored by Alderman Young, in earnest approving amendment to the boundaries of the Orphan Theater Community Improvement District, removing the property at four-twenty-one North Eighth Street therefrom and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two six five, sponsored by Alderman Moore, in earnest moving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for forty-two seventy-two West Saint Ferdinand Avenue redevelopment area containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill two six four, to the Housing Committee, Board Bill two five three, to Streets Committee, Board Bills two four nine, two fifty, and two fifty-one, and to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills two five two, two five four, two five five, two five six, two five seven, two five eight, two five nine, two sixty, two sixty-one, two sixty-two, two sixty-three, and two sixty-five. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill two two seven, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in earnest recommending approved by the Airport Commission of Board of Public Service, the Board of Estimant and Apportement Establishing and Authorizing the Public Works Improvement Program at Lambert Airport consisting of capital improvement projects at a total estimated cost of eighteen million four hundred thousand dollars in authorizing an initial appropriation in amount of ten million nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand twenty-two dollars from the airport development fund and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill two two eight, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in an earnest recommending approved by the Board of Estimant and Apportement, authorizing directing the airport, director of airports and the comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport First Right of Refusal Agreement Number AL three one nine between the City and Brownsville International Air Cargo Incorporated, doing business as binational air cargo terminals and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. The following bills were reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill two two one, sponsored by Alderman Moore, in earnest approving a redevelopment plan for forty-five forty-eight Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Board Bill two two five, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, in earnest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for eleven seventy-one through twelve sixty-nine Houdamont and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two 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 thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Young, in earnest designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as seven oh-six Market Redevelopment Area, establishing the seven oh-six Market Special Allocation Fund containing a severability clause. Board Bill two forty, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Young, in earnest affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan redevelopment area redevelopment project, authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Market Tiff containing a severability clause. Board Bill two four one, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Young, in earnest recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportement, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed seven million dollars plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment of revenue notes for seven oh-six Market Redevelopment Projects prescribing the form and details of said notes and convent covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two four two, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, in earnest approving an amendment to the Taylor Carey Tiff Redevelopment Plan, removing certain property from redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two four three, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, in earnest designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as the Carey Avenue Redevelopment Area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two four four, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, in earnest affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan redevelopment area, redevelopment project area and redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Carey Tiff Incorporated containing a severability clause. Board Bill two four five, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, in earnest recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportement, authorizing directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed two million one hundred thousand dollars plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for Carey Avenue Redevelopment Projects and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two four six, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in earnest determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill two four seven, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in earnest dissolving the special.
Have some order.
Allocation funds for the LaCleed Powerhouse Redevelopment Area and nineteen-hundred Washington Redevelopment Area. Board Bill two four eight, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in earnest dissolving the special allocation funds for the forty-two forty-nine Michigan Redevelopment Area, South Carondelet Number Three Redevelopment Area, five oh-three North Tucker Redevelopment Area, thirty-one fifty South Grand Redevelopment Area, and Skywill St. Louis Redevelopment Area. Following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee, Board Bill two oh two, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in an earnest pertaining to parking within the twenty-two hundred Thurmond Residential Parking District, authorizing traffic administrator to designate, designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the twenty-two hundred Thurmond Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the placement of residential parking, residential permit parking only signs within the district and prohibiting the parking within the district of any vehicle which does not display the authorized permit containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill two oh three, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, in earnest pertaining to street vendors amending, in an six-five oh-six one, by deleting paragraph E of Section Four of such ordinance, thereby prohibiting street vendors in the area previously known as the twenty-fourth Ward Vending District. Board Bill two thirty, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, in earnest recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in an irregular portion of Patterson beginning in east of Hereford and containing, continuing eastwardly two hundred and ten feet to a point in the city. Board Bill two thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, in an earnest pertaining to parking within the forty-two hundred and forty-four hundred North Euclid Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the forty-two hundred through forty-four hundred North Euclid Avenue Residential Parking District containing definition and an emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, in an earnest pertaining to parking within the five thousand Maffet Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the five thousand block of Maffet Avenue Residential Parking, containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. Sponsored by Alderman and Alderman, Alderman Young, Florida, Alderman Arnold Woods, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Kennedy to the transfer of real property, police property from the Board of Police Commissioners to the, and pertaining to the amendment of certain bond documents relating to the outstanding police capital improvement sales tax leasehold revenue bonds.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bill on the consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from thirteenth, second by Alderman from the eighteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of perfection consent.
Dispense with line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bills two nineteen, two twelve, two oh-five Committee Substitute, two oh-six, two oh-seven, two oh-eight, two eleven, two thirteen, two fourteen, two seventeen, two eighteen, two twenty, two twenty-two, two twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for a third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from thirteenth, second by Alderman from twelfth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnold Woods, I didn't hear you. Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Howard, Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Florida, Alderman French, twenty-four aye votes.
By your vote is staying the motion of Alderman from thirteenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. We'll dispense with line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board Bills two nineteen, two twelve, two oh-five Committee Substitute, two oh-six, two oh-seven, two oh-eight, two eleven, two thirteen, two fourteen, two seventeen, two eighteen, two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature here too, to then that these may become law. Move for adoption of our courtesy resolutions. Calendar maintain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the first, would you like to approach the dais?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd request my great friend and sister, Joanne Williams, approach the dais, please, along with the people from the Carpenter's. Mr. President, members of the board, I'd move to pass Resolution one seventy-two and request in bank, please.
Been moved by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to read this resolution and want to say, first of all, the words that are in this resolution can't begin to describe Joanne Williams, my friend. I met Joanne Williams here at the board. We didn't know each other before. I've been through the best of times with her and some of the hardest times with her. I actually have my, I still have my elephant. She knows what that means because I spent one of the hardest times that any mother could ever spend with her at the hospital with the loss of her child some many years ago. And so I have always worn this elephant to remind her that I will never forget her baby because it was just an awful time in her life, but equally as good as her birth of her grandchild. And to see me and Joanne up here bawling like this because we're both tenacious, hard-driven women and, but every time I think of that, that's just still really hard for me. So let me try to read this resolution because I don't want people to know what a crybaby I am because I have such a tough exterior usually. Whereas the St. Louis Board of Aldermen, since its exception, has relied on the insightful contribution and expert knowledge of citizens throughout the St. Louis community. And whereas one, ours is a government of the people, by the people, for the people, one which welcomes ideas and ingenuity from the passionately striving for the betterment of our society and effective administration of its government. And whereas Joanne Williams has been a fixture at St. Louis City Hall for more than twenty years, and whereas her career has taken Joanne on a long and winding road through the inner workings of state and local government, and we have witnessed Joanne wearing many hats in her service to this great city. And whereas she has devoted boundless time and energy to the improvement of the St. Louis city through her work with the St. Louis Housing Authority, the employee's retirement system, and the countless committees, boards, panels, commission, and working groups she has generously volunteered to spearhead. And whereas her most admirable, admirable, ah, can't talk here with these braces, admirable contributions and lasting legacy is the tireless voice she has given to the hard-working men and women, the city employees, who with little fanfare, cut the grass, staff the jails, clean the parks, inspect the buildings, maintain the airport, provide security and house the city stray animals. And whereas her institutional knowledge, knowledge of city government has at times eclipsed that of even our elected official, I'm going to take, I'm going to take umbrage with that. And whereas her wisdom, willingness, and wit will be sorely missed by all of us who have come to know and respect her, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate Joanne Williams on the occasion of her retirement as the business representative for the Carpenter's District Council, wish her well in her future endeavors, and thank her for her decade-long commitment to the citizens of St. Louis. And we direct the clerk and board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of this proceeding and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be prepared, presented to our honory at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor, introduced this twenty-second day of November two thousand and thirteen in bank and adopted in bank.
Told Joanne, Joanne, she's going to have to hang in there for a minute because I know there's some comments, some discussion from the floor. A lot of people want to wish her well, so let's take those comments now. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. As Alderman from the first said, words cannot really describe the invaluable advice and dedication to our community, you know, on behalf of Joanne Williams. I remember when I was just a neophyte back in two thousand and two, when most people didn't believe in me, most people were concerned about me. It was more so the fear of the unknown. Joanne Williams was one of the few power brokers in the city of St. Louis that stepped up to play to support me. She was one of, only one major organization that stood behind me, and I'll be eternally grateful for that. She's always been a woman of a great spirit, you know, does it from the heart, you know, she truly believes in people. We haven't always agreed. We've agreed most of the time, but what she would always say is, at least you can't say you didn't know all the facts. She would always say that she's very fair, you know, she doesn't take things personal. She's a tremendous advocate for all the members of the unions that she represent. And, you know, I consider you a friend, Joanne Williams, you know, I certainly would miss you. You're just a beautiful person, well-rounded, everything about you, and you're a fantastic cook, you know. Hopefully one day we can get some of your cooking back down here, even though you're not here. So think about that, you guys want to cater something, Joanne Williams. But again, I just can't say enough, you know, I love you from my heart. And again, I'll never forget what you were able to do for me, a young man that just wanted to do good in his community against all odds. You helped me persevere, and I'm eternally grateful for you for that. Thanks and congratulations.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joanne, I've only been here for about four and a half years, and, you know, you certainly have made your mark with me over those four and a half years. And your knowledge of, you know, just everything that's happening in the city is absolutely remarkable. It's been a treasure and something that I've relied upon, you know, over the course of my tenure down here. And, you know, I'm certainly going to miss that and hopefully will be able to continue our friendship in just a different capacity going forward. And I, I'm just really excited about this new chapter in your life. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention- if I didn't mention the coleslaw, you know, that's one of my favorite things, you make the best coleslaw I've ever tasted, and I, I, I'm not going to say, hope we get some down here, I'm going to say, I'll be at your house, eh, for lunch, eh, because I love it that much. And, um, you know, likewise, I love you too, you have just been a really wonderful friend and a great leader, you know, for all of the city employees that you have represented over the years. And, um, you know, there's going to be some really big shoes to fill for whomever is taking your place, and thank you so much for everything that you've done, not just down here at the board, but for our city.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Joanne, you'll be sorely missed, we really appreciate your hope and knowledge that you've given us while you've been down here, you've been very instrumental with the city employees and then working with the Board of Aldermen, you know, we really lean on you for a lot of your expertise, and the city's going to really miss you, especially city employees and a lot of us at the Board of Aldermen, so we really appreciate all the hard work you, you have done for the city, and you're irreplaceable, we love you, and, uh, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you.
Another 16th out of 20, who was it, 16th or 28th? You could go, I don't know.
Thank you, Alderman Krusen. Um, I just say ditto to what Alderman Boyd said, because I was in the same shoes, I was just working in the community, and one of the first people I met was Joanne Williams, who gave me unbelievable advice. I have looked up to you for so many years in more ways than one.
Yeah.
And I didn't know you were retiring, so I'm very much going to miss you, because I haven't had that chance to absorb it. So, thank you, Joanne, I really appreciate all the advice you've given me all these years.
All right, thank you. The gracious Alderwoman from the 28th, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joanne, congratulations. Now, you can't possibly be old enough to retire. Look at this gal, you all, look at her, she cannot possibly be, and I happen to know that she's a very young retiree, so I look forward to your next chapter, whatever that might be, and I know you're thinking about that. Congratulations, and, um, we plan to see you more. Thank you.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Joanne, I can't, uh, not sit by here and not say anything, we've known each other a long time from our days in personnel, luck, the good thing is, we never clashed over employees and civil service here in here, so I, I did my job well that I didn't hear from you. Uh, I just want to wish you the best of luck, um, you've done a wonderful job, uh, you, you put your heart in everything, especially when you represent city employees, make sure they get a fair shake. Um, a lot of times we don't succeed, but no one can ever say you never went down fi- uh, without fighting for them, which they all appreciate that, I know they do. Um, whatever you're going to do, we're going to miss you down here, um, especially you've gotten that new hairdo lately, you really look younger. Um, but in all, I think every Alderman here, uh, shares the same thing, that they appreciate your friendship, um, no matter what side of bill you're on, they appreciate your honesty and, and, and your word, so, and that's the main thing that you have going with you, so, uh, you will have a great future. Thanks.
Alderwoman from the 19th.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Now, Joanne, I just have so many wonderful things to say about you, and you know, we have friends from many years ago in common, your family members and everything, but see, what I didn't know was all those years I was eating that good food, they were bringing to the parties that you had cooked. It was incredible, and I think that's one of the things that kind of drew me to them anyway, was because of the good food. But aside from that, you are one of those, um, she-ros that should be remembered and the union struggle. You know, I was just talking about Ora Malone the other night, because I remember her representation of amalgamated, and I tutored under her for a while when I was a union rep. So there's a lot of things that you can share for the future, for those who are coming up, and I hope you, you know, have the ability to do that, but in the meantime, I have a building for you, already has the full commercial kitchen in it, and you could open up your business in my ward, so come on, okay? You need to keep putting that food out there for us, so I just want to wish you well, and you're smart, you're getting out, while you can still, you know, be real jazzy and take care of business. I wish you the best.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 14th.
Joanne, I wish you the best, and you are truly the picture of, I will not ask your age, but you are the new 40. And I hope this doesn't mean that you're leaving public service, that you are just turning your chapter and turning the page and moving forward with what your next mission in life is. You are a good role model for all women, and you truly say what you mean and mean what you say, and you say it in a way that no one ever takes offense, and I admire that, and you've been really good about giving me advice and I think the rest of my colleagues here. Thank you so much.
Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Joanne, you are a, a class act, I only hope that your membership, uh, realized how vigilant you were, uh, that you perform your task with zeal, uh, boy, I don't know how many times you've appeared before me sitting in some kind of chair, and I, but it's a, it's a, you've al- you, you've always been a delight, you, you were well-informed and, and you were really a tribute, a tribute to what, to what you did, you did it well, and we wish you the very best. Thank you.
Alderman from the 20th.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, Ms. Joanne Williams has often sat next to me here in the chambers, um, and, uh, has given advice, probably not to me, to others that I've overheard, um, but her, uh, the first time that I met her were in some troubled times, as I recall, with regard to some of our pay bills, uh, when I was the chair of the Public Employees Committee. I can tell you that, uh, she's a very fast talker, um, she's very knowledgeable, she's kind, yet assured, um, she, uh, helped me to understand why it was that unions didn't always agree on everything, um, and, uh, she's not a person that goes along to get along, uh, but more importantly than that, she has great information, and she has always, always, always represented those for whom she was sent down here to represent, and for that, you're a class act. Thank you.
Alderman from the 8th.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, Joanne, I mean, you've always been a formidable opponent, but you've always treated me with respect, I know, on a lot of the pay bills and the city budget things, uh, we worked through them, and we still get along, and, and we're still friends, and you're always a great adversary when we're on the same time, same side, we never lost anything throughout that period of time, and, and really those carpenters up with you, you know, they should be very appreciative, because just from my position in life and seeing, um, what you've done for the carpenters' union is quite impressive, and I don't remember, and I know, I know a lot of you up there with her, um, anyone, you know, and maybe I just haven't seen it, been so active and so proactive, um, in making the carpenters as strong as they are today, and so you deserve a lot of thanks from us and from the carpenters' union. Thank you.
Both of you. Alderwoman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would be remiss if I didn't stay, stand up and say, thank you, Joanne, for all you've done for all of us. I think that the first thing that comes to mind is that everybody here respects your cooking abilities, because they're always hungry, but I want to say, thanks for the depth of your knowledge, the fact that you do know things and can inform us, that people have respect for you because you always treat them back with respect, and you always are personal about things too, with, you know, Sharon was talking about the elephant, there are things that you've done are meaningful for all of us, and we really appreciate the relationship we've had through these years, and we wish you the best in this retirement, whatever that might be, good health and lots of fun, because you'll, you'll make it. You've been a role model for women across the country. Um, I know that from conversations I've had with you about your dealings with conferences and, and in the union and various other things. So, you'll go on, and people will admire you because you give back to them and give back to your community, so very happy retirement to you and to your husband, have a great time.
Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to inform the Alderman from the 22nd that we are still unsure and worried about him. And, Joanne, thank you, if you believed in him, God bless you. No. Joanne, happy retirement, we'll miss you, miss you, miss you, uh, but not as much as I've missed you at happy hour, so now that you're retired, expect to see you at the tavern every day at 3:00, thank you.
Alderman from the 18th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Retire? Really? When you told me, I didn't believe it to begin with, but I guess this proves the fact that you were telling the truth this, on this one, that you are talking about retiring. You've heard people say that you are a class act, I would just put it in a slightly different way, that it's not often that a person like you crosses our path. An individual who has shown service to this community, you have proven that commitment has no gender. You've proven to us that tenacity is neither male nor female. You've proven that being concerned for others goes beyond gender. You have represented what I would consider to be the higher qualities of what it means to be a human being. You care, you've been able to show tenacity on issues, you stood for what I would consider a just-right issues, for issues that are in the best interest of those that you represent. And surely, when you stand up for something with both your height and your voice and the speed by which you can speak and the power that you speak from and the intelligence that you put to it and your years of knowledge, if I had a wig, my hair would be blown off. I could say it was blown off anyway with the shortness that it is, but you have shown us qualities that for many of us, for many people could, could mimic and to use to make a better world. I would hope that your colleagues from, from the areas of the work that you found yourself in recognize what they had when they had you, and what they'll be losing, not only as, as the carpenters' union, but what you brought to the table, period. Well, you know, I could talk about your cooking also, because I didn't really know you could cook, too, you did something, and it was sitting there in the, uh, in the leisure room, and they said that you did it. But more than that, what I saw you have was a concern and a commitment to serve beyond what the job description said, and that's important. If we're going to make our communities better, that is the only way it's going to happen. But like with anything, times change. Spring does what? Goes into summer, summer cools into fall, and fall quickens into winter, there is a time for change for everything, and in your life, we're at that time of change. I'm happy to share it with you, to stand here and watch you go to the next transition of retirement, but we know your retirement is going to involve activism, that your retirement is going to involve you being even more involved in the community, because you don't have to go to work. And because of that, we'd like to say for all of your years of contribution, thank you, and let you know that we appreciate each and every step that you made to help making this a better city to live in. Congratulations on your retirement, enjoy each and every moment.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? I also want to add, Joanne, I think Alderman Kennedy summed it all up very well. When you think about your total impact and some of the things that you've done, I think one of the things that I will always remember about your service here at the city is that you've always put the people you represent first. So when you were at the table, it was no doubt that they had a representative at the table that's going to work for their best interests. And because of you, families are able to put food on the table, because of you, they've been able to pay their rent, because of you, they've been able to send their kids to school and pay for the basic necessities of life. Because had you just given up and walked away, they wouldn't have been able to do those things. And that in itself has changed families, have, have allowed people to raise kids and send them on to create better lives. So I cannot thank you enough, and I, I think about your cooking, and your cooking is, is incredible, the reason Alderman Kennedy couldn't talk about your cooking, because he only eats raw vegetables, he doesn't, he doesn't, there ain't no cooking involved in anything that Alderman Kennedy eats, but I eat almost anything. So, so your cooking is, is just absolutely incredible, but I tell you this, you know, people talked about, uh, you know, how beautiful you are and, and how you cook, how great your cooking is and everything, so I would say this, I think your name should be, Joanne, don't let the smooth taste fool you, Williams, because at the end of the day, I would not want to debate her, uh, for the firefighters that are in the room, you know, you know, you've tried, if you try to take a sip of water from a, from a water hose that's turned to full blast, it's hard to do, all right? That isn't like Joanne, Joanne is more like trying to take a sip of water from a fire hose born at high, high, I mean, it, that's how much she brings to the table when she's working, so I cannot thank you enough, as a father of four, I thank you, as a, as a resident of this city, I thank you for your many years of service, so congratulations on your retirement, and I wish you many more years of working throughout the city, and, and you've heard us say before about these resolutions and what they mean. Resolution is the highest honor that this board has to give, but what it does, it is cementing time some of your many contributions on behalf of the residents of this city up until this point. So 100, 200 years from now, when they research the records of the City of St. Louis, they'll be able to read about this day, they'll be able to understand that we thought so much about your contributions, that we paused in our deliberations today to make sure that you were properly recognized for those many contributions. So congratulations, and thanks again, Joanne, for your many contributions.
Mr. President, members of the board, a member of the carpenters' council, Mr. Scott Brown would like to also address the members.
Joanne, on behalf of the carpenters' union's entire executive board and our 24,000 members across the two and a half state area, first of all, we'd like to say thank you to you. You have put us on the map, not only locally, but internationally. Uh, most of you may or may not know that Joanne also served in capacity at our international level as a, uh, an assistant to our general president in Washington, DC. Joanne, with her hard work dedication, most of you all know about, uh, has put the carpenters' union on the map, and for that, I thank you. Personally, I'd like to say thank you to Joanne for many, many years ago bringing me down here, walking me through the minefields of, of city hall and city politics, uh, introducing me to all you folks, uh, making me understand what the process was and how it worked, um, thank God you were a lot taller than me to get me through the process, so when she stirred up the trouble, I just stood behind her. But beyond, on behalf of the carpenters' union, uh, executive board and their entire membership, we'd like to say thank you for your dedication. And Alderman Kennedy, I just want to clarify something, you're pretty convinced that she is retiring because we're standing up here doing all this. I happen to sit on the pension board, and she has not been issued her, her first pension check yet, so well, she'll have to talk to me after this meeting. Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to, uh, for Joanne to step forward so that we can present this resolution to her with all the love, appreciation, and respect that is due her, and I'd ask her to step forward and receive it, this resolution, and thanks.
Okay, I do talk fast, um, and I really wasn't aware of that until a grievance hearing probably about 25 years ago, where one of the, uh, the hearing officers at the Department of Personnel told me, she said, look, um, I'm listening to you, and, uh, I have to make a choice between trying to take notes or just stopping and listen to what you say, because I figure everything you say has relevance, but you're talking so fast, I can't possibly take notes at the same time. And so I've tried to slow down my speech over the years, um, because it, it, it actually developed as a being the ninth of 10 children. And having eight older siblings, you only got a finite amount of time to get in your point of view before all discussions were closed off and you, you know, you weren't allowed to speak anymore. Because in my day, when I was being raised, children were to be seen and not heard. But in the area that I was growing up in, between the civil rights movement and the Women's Lives movement and the Vietnam War and all the things that people were debating so heavily, I was involved and engaged in those things even then, and I thought what I had to say was important. And so I wanted to be heard with my older brothers and sisters. But I have to say that I was not expecting this, and there's a couple of people who were conniving to keep this secret, who are going to pay dearly after this is over. But I love this city. I was born and raised in St. Louis. I don't know any other place. That was my home. I wasn't raised to do anything halfway. And so anything I did, I always wanted to do it to my fullest. I've never been afraid to fail. So it's never bothered me if I was alone on an issue because if I believed in it, I believed that it was the right thing to do. And I could stand there by myself and say what I had to say and know at the end of the day that I could go home and know that I did everything I could to affect that issue. My mom used to say, you know, this is not a dress rehearsal. Life isn't. You don't get to go through it and figure out what you did wrong and come back and do it over again. You get one shot to do what you think is important, to try to make a difference. And, you know, I always understood that. She also said you didn't have to be sick to die, and, and that's true. So I never took for granted that I would grow old and die. You know, I lost a son nine days before his 20th birthday, and I grew up knowing my father had a terminal illness when I was four years old. So there's never been a time in my life where I didn't value every day on this side of the earth. And I always tried to make it be as fulfilling a day as I could. I've had some really, really, really rewarding and fulfilling times serving. It has been my belief that, again, I'm quoting my mother, that a closed fist can't receive anything, that if you open it and give, you're bound to have it open to get back. And that has been my mantra throughout my life. I have, I've always enjoyed giving more than receiving, and I look for every opportunity to do that. I've served the city for 10 years with the American Federation of State and County Municipal Employees, representing city employees. 20 years with the carpenters after that, eight years before as a city employee. So I have very serious ties to this government and to the city, and I've always believed that I'd never left it, either as an employee or as a representative of the employees who work for it. So there, there's where my passion lies. And that's why I understood their issues, why I understood their concerns, why I understand why every dime that they make is, is not just a lime item in a budget, but it is the ability to pay a bill or to put food on the table or to keep the lights on or to pay rent or to pay city property taxes or to do all the things that we need citizens to contribute to do in their city. I've had the opportunities to, to work since Van Shamel was mayor, under every mayor thereafter. I've learned something from each and every one of them. Geraldine Osborne taught me how to read the budget, and it's because of Geraldine, we now have a charter change that requires that the budget be passed since July the 1st. I've had the opportunities to work with Alderman Villa when he was president of the Board of Alderman and every president thereafter. I've had the opportunity to work with the Martya Boosies and the, I've really had, I can name Alderman for over the years that I've been really, really, really honored to work with, and that includes you. We don't always agree. I don't expect this to. All I've ever asked you to do was to listen to my position and give me a fair shot in the hearing of it and believe that I would not lie to you about whatever it was I was presenting and then spoke your conscience. I really, really appreciate this today. I wasn't expecting it, but I gave myself a year and a half to come to this decision to retire because I only want, I wanted my boss to have a chance to absorb it, but I wanted to have the same opportunity to make sure it was something that was right and that I was ready for. And I've never actually known where I was going, but I always knew when it was time to leave. And, you know, I think this, the next chapter is going to be very opportunistic. There's a lot of challenges facing labor, there's a lot of challenges facing our city, and there's a lot of challenges facing our state. And I hope to be a part of that and involved in that and engaged in that. And I want all the city employees to know that I will always be, you know, there rooting for them and that I've always been a part of them and I wish them well. I wish you well. I thank you so much for this honor. I, I appreciate it more than you ever know. It was so unexpected, and it was just very, very, very grateful to have had this opportunity to work with all of you, work in this city, work in this capacity, work for this great organization, the carpenters, who have been more than I ever expected. I never thought that I needed another family, but when I began working there, I gained a whole nother family, and for that, I'll be eternally grateful. And I just want you to know, you touched me, and I really am grateful for this. Thank you.
As everybody out there knows, Joanne has people everywhere, so you can't get anything by her. So much so that we said we can't even send this out to get framed because she would probably know the framer, and the framer would call and say, "Hey, we have a resolution in here for you, Joanne. So we're going to send this out now that you know. We'll send this out this week to get framed." But the good thing about that is you can tell us your favorite colors and all that stuff, and we can factor that into it. We're going to have you guys move that way for a quick photo. But I'd like to see if, at the end of this meeting, we should be out fairly quickly. If everybody can stick around so that we can get everybody lined up here for a couple quick photos with the entire board that's still here and Joanne. So I'd ask everybody, right after the board meeting, when we adjourn, just make your way to the front real quick so that we can do a couple snapshots with Joanne. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution. Count all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of the, the M-Bank resolution.
So noted.
First reading resolutions.
Resolution 170, sponsored by Alderman Valmer Enterprise Zone for Tile and Stone International.
Alderman, Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the first reading resolution 170.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask if we refer this to the HUDs committee?
It's been moved that, that we refer it by the Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please refer that, our resolution 170.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading resolutions.
The following resolution was reported out of the Transportation and Commerce Committee, resolution 165, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Flowers. The Board of Alderman appointed review of the increase as proposed by the Port Authority Board of Commissioners and approved by the Board of Public Service and the said Board of Alderman hereby approves the current adjusted base rate for residential, for rental of all land owned by the city, which is situated within the port district shall be .176.25 per square foot, and the mooring rental shall be $17.625 per linear foot. Each rate on an annual basis upon approval by the City of St. Louis Board of Public Service and the City of St. Louis Board of Alderman.
All woman from 7th, you recognize on the second reading of resolution 165.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for adoption of resolution 165.
Been moved by the Alderman from 7th, second by Alderman from 22nd. Any discussion? Been a request for previous row. Hearing no objection. Motion carries.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions.
With dispensal line item 23, announcements.
Tuesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Thursday, the offices closed. Thanksgiving Day holiday, the offices closed. Friday, the offices closed. Thanksgiving holiday. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman, Alderman from 20th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I've been asked by the Greater St. Louis Electrical Workers Minority Caucus to announce that they are having a Christmas coat drive on Saturday, December 14th at their headquarters on Elizabeth. They're going to be giving away the coats to the boys and girls home of St. Louis. They're looking for 2,500 coats. They did that, I think, last year, and it's both collecting new and slightly used coats as well as money for that. Everyone has this in their box.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from 12th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I, I just want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving coming up and just remember, you know, to be grateful because what we think we don't have, other people don't. So very, I want to tell everybody, happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. Alderman, Alderman from 14th.
I would just like to remind people that today is the 50th anniversary of the death of our past president, Robert F.
Kennedy.
Not Robert, no.
Yeah.
President Kennedy.
Yeah.
And I think we should carry that forth in the spirit of, of President Kennedy as we go about our daily routine.
Okay, thank you. All, all the woman from 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd just like to recognize on this Sunday will be the 97th birthday of attorney Frankie Muse Freeman.
Wow.
And I'd like to wish her a happy birthday. If you want to share in her celebration at her church, Washington Tabernacle Church on the corner of Compton and Washington, please be there by 10:15. But she's phenomenal. All she's done for this country and civil rights is, it's just, and think about it, she served under four presidents, and she's done many, many things and supported many people, most especially the attorneys here in Missouri. She has mentored and tutored many of them, and I just love her. So just a great, great, happy birthday to her.
All right, thank you. Alderman from 13, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I make motion to excuse, I'd like to thank all of you who expressed condolences and all the cards and wishes that we received on the loss of my brother Jerry. My daughter, my, my sister-in-law Linda and her two children and all the Wessels family appreciate your support. Thank you. The, I move for to excuse the Alderman from the 2nd, 4th, 9th, 15th and 21st wards due to necessary absence.
Moved by the Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 11th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Alderman from 13, you recognize on the motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, December 6th.
Moved by the Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 25th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Stand adjourned.